All right, we'll call the Common Council of the City of Milton to order on January 3rd, 2017 at 7:03 PM. Can I get confirmation of a progress meeting notice?
The meeting was noticed here at City Hall, Piggly Wiggly and Dave's Ace Hardware.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. We have an agenda. Item number three, public comments regarding items which can be affected by council action. Do we have anybody signed in?
No.
Okay. Item number four, approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Did anybody say opposed?
No.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, I was struggling with an orange.
Okay, the consent agenda has been approved. Okay, item number five, our city administrators' presentation regarding 2016 year and review.
Thank you. This is something that we hadn't done in the past but wanted to do this year and want to do in future years moving forward to kind of just take a look back at the year that has passed, even though we're already three days into 2017. Wanted to look at the year 2016, things that happened in the city that I think were important and also give the opportunity for the department heads who had specific projects that were relative to their department also to talk about things that were done in their departments that affected the city. A year is a very long time and oftentimes we all look back and say, did that happen in 2016 or was that 2015? So I thought this would be a good opportunity just to kind of give a brief presentation to talk about what happened in 2016 and then also start to take a look into 2017. And what I have passed out is a more comprehensive list. I asked each department head to give me, you know, basically their top five or their top 10 list of projects, but as you can see, it's very hard to narrow a year's worth of work down into five or 10 things. So the departments put together lists of accomplishments that occurred over the year and how I described the accomplishments were projects that had an impact on the community or accomplishments that kind of set the stage for future action or future changes to service. So the presentation up on the screen will be kind of a synopsis of it, but there's a lot more information that goes behind this and that's provided in the handout. So in 2016, hopefully this'll do dead. Do I need to turn it on?
Yeah.
There's no color on it. There we go. 2016. It's green. The battery's dead? It's green, but it's not doing anything.
No, it's green. Here, I'll play with this and I'll push buttons for you.
That's weird. We've used this a number of times. So one of the things that was done this year is we had our bond rating reaffirmed and I took this quote from the financial statement that was provided to us because I think it's a good overall look at the city's financial picture. And it says, "The city's management team is strong, adhering to a long-term capital plans and maintenance of reserves. The city utilizes a conservative budgetary approach and a multi-year capital plan. The city's cash position has improved steadily over the past year." That type of statement may seem very blah, you know, doesn't seem very exciting, but that's about as exciting as you're going to get for a financial statement when they talk about the city's management team is strong, that we adhere to long-term capital plans, that we utilize a conservative budgeting approach and have a multi-year capital plan. So, you know, like I said, that's about as glamorous as you get from a financial statement, but it's very important to note, you know, there's a lot of kind of chatter out there that the City of Milton is in trouble and, oh, we had a plan and this plan has gone to disaster. No, it's not at all. The city's in good financial position. It's in good financial hands and, you know, we've continued to see that through for at least the last year and beyond. I talked about as long as I could about that slide.
But congratulations, City of Milton management team. We are very proud of you.
So now we'll go from, on a department-by-department basis. There we go. All right. Were the batteries dead? Is that all it was? All right. I'm sorry YouTube viewers. So again, we'll go department by department and certainly Scott and how we jump in, if Lisa was here, you jump in to add any kind of further clarification or, you know, highlights that you may. Police Department, 2016 accomplishments, implementation of the new body camera equipment and software. Again, this was new in 2016. They developed a policy, implemented those body cameras, and as many in the council have seen, those body cameras are implemented and being used. Purchase of new protective vests and helmets through a private fundraising initiative. If you remember, was it $11,000, Scott?
Seven.
$7,000. Was privately raised through a fundraising effort in 11 days. Was that where I got the $11,000 from?
Yeah, it was within two weeks.
Yeah. To purchase new protective vests and helmets for the police department. We ratified a new three-year contract for the labor union in the police department. Increased community outreach activities. Scott and his crew have been doing different types of community outreach, coffee with the cop, working with the schools to increase that community outreach and that presence in the community. And here's one that kind of jumped out at me, 370 unique code enforcement actions. As you know, the police department handles code enforcement. They're the primary responders in the code enforcement initiatives in the community. 370 unique code enforcement actions. That doesn't mean that Blaine went to the same house 10 times and counted it as 10 times. That's 370 unique code enforcement actions. So that means that we're out there and we still work on a complaint basis. So that means that the folks are out there, they're responding to issues and concerns of the community and addressing those issues as quickly as we can. The other thing that jumps out to me on that is we had 370 unique code enforcement actions in 2016. One of those went to trial and, you know, that got a lot of press, for better for worse, but what that says to me is 369 of those were resolved or are still ongoing. I think that's an impressive number and something that we should be proud of as a community, that we do have a community that does, you know, is interested in doing the right thing. We have a code enforcement process that is working. You know, we can always make it better. There's always going to be buildings or yards or things of that nature that fall into disrepair and we'll try to address those as best we can, but that's a pretty solid success rate, I would say. Anything you'd like to add, Scott, from your perspective? The Milton Public Library. Obviously Milton Public Library's had quite a banner year. Completed the construction and renovation of the new library facility. They had their final inspection yet back in December of last year. Successfully fundraised the balance of the construction costs beyond city funding. Opened the underground library, still in operation at this time. Significant increased collaborations with the school district of Milton. I think on your sheet here, Lisa elaborates what that number was, but it's, you know, those increased collaborations to try to build that sense of community and create those connections with our youth of our community to the library and have their library continue to be recognized as an institution of learning and growth and expansion and discovery. The library is one of the crown jewels of Milton and something, again, that we should be very proud of. And that's why I put the last bullet point, an amazing team. They do tremendous work at the library with very lean staff and they have an incredibly dedicated staff. Their staff is, I put them up there against any library staff in the state, just a great group of people who try hard, who are really passionate about their positions and their cause and something that, you know, I'm proud of, but, you know, they do it on their own. They're a very good group of people that are doing it because they love it. Public Works. Public Works is always one of the busiest departments and it's always one of the most visible departments, but still wanted to kind of touch on a number of the things that happened in 2016 that you may or may not have recognized. Reconstruction of West Madison Avenue. That was a big project that took place over the course of the summer and is finalized right there in front of West Elementary. Reconstruction of Chicago Street, the two portions of Chicago Street, the one that's closest to City Hall here and then the one that's further down by United Ethanol. Construction of the new Merchant Row parking lot. That's the new parking lot that has been heavily utilized, that's right across the street there on the northern half of Merchant Row from those businesses. Reconstruction of well number two. It's one of our more visible wells in the community and that's been finalized, at least the outside portions of it. Planted over 50 new trees and that was partially in response to the Emerald Ash Board but partially in response to some of the donations that we received in continuing efforts to beautify the community. Completed 13 plow events and I think actually when I created this, it was 13, but I think we're up to 14 now. We may have had one more since this was created. So 14 plow events in 2016. Let's see if we can have less than 14 in 2017. Right, Howie? Installed the Tower Hill Playground Equipment. This was playground equipment that was installed in Tower Hill that was put forth by the Parks and Rec Committee and one that city staff installed. And assisted in countless community events. This is one of those kind of unsung hero aspects of the Public Works Department. Whenever there's a community event, whether that be chicken barbecue, Wally's Fest, Fourth of July, or even just smaller scale ones that aren't necessarily community-wide, Public Works is always there, moving barricades, responding to, you know, bringing trashcans in, responding to little requests of, hey, can we have this moved here for the Mary Milton Holiday? They installed new plugs in the park to accommodate that. You know, the Public Works Department is usually very much behind the scenes but extremely instrumental in those community-wide events. And that's one of those things that's, I think, important to remember when we talk about what's the city's role in community-wide events. In a year that we had to unfortunately cut funding to nonprofits, those types of activities maintained and will maintain for the foreseeable future. So it may not come across as an exact dollar amount. It comes across as essential tasks that could not be completed without the work of the Public Works Department and their willingness to help and their ability to be flexible with their schedules to get those types of activities done and accommodated. Anything you want to add, Howie?
No, just maybe the Tower Hills one is similar to the police next door. It's similar to that one where a lot of people donated money and we didn't have to use general fund money for that through like the scrap drives and the rebates and things that we get.
Yeah. Thanks for bringing that point up. I think that's in the expanded version. I know Inga pointed that out to me, so I apologize for not mentioning that, but again, another aspect where the community rallied together, saw a need and put forth their own resources to have that done. City Hall, kind of just lumped us all together, Dan and Alena and I and Inga, but, you know, there was a lot of activity out of City Hall as well. You know, one of the big headlines of the year was we refinanced almost $7.5 million worth of long-term debt and effectively saved the city over $1 million in future interest payments. And that's general fund and utilities included, but that is something that kind of went under the radar but was a very important aspect of our work in 2016. Ton of work went into that by Dan, certainly got the participation of the local banks and we recognized them for that at one of our previous meetings, but it also was how we got our bond rating reaffirmed or required our bond rating to get reaffirmed was through that refinancing. And again, that's over $1 million of future interest payments that won't need to be made. We didn't have to do it. We could have just sat still and paid those payments, but, you know, Dan was always kind of looking outside the box, thinking of new ways to save money and brought that forward and, you know, it's something that will easily be forgotten three, four, five, 10 years down the line, but without that kind of effort and initiative in 2016, our long-term debt future, as bleak as it still looks, would look even bleaker. We passed the 2017 budget with less than 1%, less than 3/4 of a percent increase in expenditures. Successfully completed four elections and then I noted in a bullet point there, the November election was part of the Wisconsin statewide recount which found Milton to be 100% accurate with their ballots. So not a single vote was changed in that, which means that we had good leadership by Alena and her team and outstanding poll workers and folks who were willing to stick around that night till 10 o'clock to make sure everything was in order and taken care of properly. Implemented department head goals and work plans. That was a 2016 initiative that we started back in January of 2016 and worked on it throughout the year. Revamped the city's health insurance plan design and offerings. This was out of necessity, but nonetheless it was quite a major undertaking and an educational process for us at City Hall as well as the employees who utilize our health insurance program. It's not something that we wanted to do, it's not something that we anticipated doing, but due to the kind of out-of-control increases in health insurance, we saw a 16% increase to our health insurance plan, which forced our hand into looking at different ways to offer, still offer quality insurance and quality health plans, but do it in a more affordable way and we were able to do that as part of the 2017 budget. Completed the new Milton Tourism brochure. I know Ryan brought some of those at the last meeting or Inga did. I know that they were getting passed around. Linda did, somebody did, but those were completed as part of the 2016 effort and if you haven't seen them, I saw them out at businesses over the holiday season, so I'm glad to see that those are being utilized. And then lastly, from the City Hall's perspective, entered into a five-year contract with the new city assessor. That was a process that Dan and I kind of started mid-year and worked on and was ultimately approved by the council in late 2016. They've already started work, they've already started to do, you know, kind of their preliminary due diligence, ramping up for the 2017 assessment season and then the future 2018 revaluation. So they're going to be busy. You'll see those folks out around the community all year long. Economic development. I put this separate as this is, you know, one of the most important aspects of my job but also of our entire job, not only as city staff but as the council as well. In economic development in 2016, we created TIF number nine, which created additional development opportunities on Crossroads Park. We amended TIF six, seven and eight to better allocate incentives and increment throughout the community. We were able to utilize some of those increments to do some of the improvements in Merchant Row as well as Goodrich Square. We had over 150,000 square feet of new industrial expansion added to the industrial park. The vast majority of that was charter NEX, but nonetheless 150,000 square feet is a substantial, substantial figure. Janesville has added a lot of square footage in their industrial parks, a lot, and, you know, it's a good thing for all of Rock County, but one of kind of their big projects was the spec building that they built out on the east side of Janesville. And again, I know I've noted this before, but I'll note it again, that building was 100,000 square feet and that was kind of one of the prime projects in Janesville. We had 150,000 added in existing space. So I know I've said it before, but it's important to repeat over and over again that expansion of existing businesses is as important, if not more important, than the construction of new facilities. Not to say that we're not looking to build new facilities out in our industrial park, we're doing that every day, but what I don't want to be discounted is the expansion and the commitment and the investment that our existing buildings and our existing companies are making in the City of Milton. Over $2.6 million in commercial and industrial development and investment in the community. 2.6 million is a pretty substantial amount. You know, that's roughly about a 10% growth in Crossroads Industrial Park. And, you know, again, a lot of that was charter NEX, but a lot of it was other buildings, other additions, other expansions, other small investments that have been made. Here's one that really, really, really jumped out at me, really jumped out at me. Over $1.5 million in residential construction happened in the City of Milton in 2016. Six of those were new housing starts. Those six new housing starts were more new housing starts in 2016 than the previous three years combined. So six is not a huge number, but when you look at it compared to where we've been over the last three years, six is a huge number. And obviously that doesn't account for all of the $1.5 million. A lot of that is simple, you know, renovations, upgrades, expansions to existing residential homes, but $1.5 million is a big number and it's one that certainly jumped out at me. And then the six new housing starts are part of that 1.5 and that's a good sign of things to come and we've already had discussions a couple of times over the last, probably the fourth quarter of 2016 with various developers who are looking to continue that trend into 2017. We had 10 new business startups in the City of Milton in 2016. Those range in size and shape, but the list of those businesses is in the packet. I didn't want to fill up the whole slide with that. That's 10 new business startups. I will say sadly enough, that number was 12, but two of those businesses that started in 2016 also closed in 2016. So net 10 new business startups in the City of Milton in 2016. And then lastly, for economic development, we created the Junction Square Plan and began implementing elements of both Junction Square and the Goodrich Square Plan. Obviously, elements of the Goodrich Square Plan had previously been implemented, but we continued to implement those elements of the Goodrich Square Plan along with adopting the Junction Square Plan and beginning to implement those elements. So we saw activity on both sides of the community in both downtowns, investment made both private and publicly into infrastructure and things of that nature. So obviously the north Merchant Row parking lot was probably the most visible example of that, but there was also improvements made on the Goodrich side of town in terms of tree plantings and continuation of the sidewalk network in and around the new parking lot that the school district created at Milton East. Other accomplishments in 2016, these are kind of catchalls, but ones that apply to everybody who works for the city regardless of their departments. We assisted with all city committees. Every city committee has a staff member that is associated with it and, you know, that's something that we take very seriously and we recognize the importance of the committee structure in the City of Milton and staff works a lot of time with those committee members, not only during the committee meetings but outside of those committee meetings, trying to effectuate some of their projects and wishes as we move through the year. Provided excellent customer service and citizen service. Again, that kind of sounds cliche, but it's something that I see every day in my office is just the citizen, the commitment to this customer service that we get. Time and time again, it just seems to be second nature for folks in those positions to kind of go above and beyond the call of duty when assisting someone, a citizen who's got an issue or a concern or even a complaint. It's just second nature to so many folks in our organization. Work with pride. Again, this is seen time and time again. I see it time and time again and I get reports of it to me time and time again, the folks in Public Works, folks out in PD, library folks, folks at City Hall, really taking kind of ownership and pride in their service delivery. Community involvement. A number of staff members are involved in various committees, various organizations, various fundraising efforts, various churches, faith-based groups that they don't have to, but they do it because they feel that commitment to their community and they feel that commitment to the City of Milton and they want to be involved. We had a United Way campaign again here in 2016, or I'm sorry, 2017. We started one in 16 and continued down to 17 and saw increased participation in our United Way campaign. That's at a time when wages are being held steady or declining. Folks continue to give a little bit more each year to those types of efforts because that's the kind of people that we have that work for us. And understanding the larger picture. During the budget process, it was a difficult process and there was a lot of difficult conversations with folks who understood that, you know, this isn't ideal. You know, we want to continue to see 3% increases. We want to continue to have the best equipment, but we understand the bigger picture at play here and we understand that, you know, the rising tide rises all boats and maybe the police department can do without this item for this year if that makes things better or maybe Public Works can do without an item this year if that makes things better. And it's something that I saw time and time again throughout the year and I know I've talked about it at a couple of meetings, but I continue to be amazed at the number of times, you know, Howie walks into my office and says, "Oh, hey, the guys came up with this idea down at the shop to extend the life of this equipment or to buy something in a different way or to lease equipment." It happens throughout the entire year and all of those things add up and they, you know, they may not be, you know, the most exciting things, but they're exciting for us in many ways. And lastly, navigating difficult waters. 2016 was not necessarily unlike any other year, but it had its challenges and staff continued to work, to do the right things, to make the right decisions and to do it with the pride and kind of community involvement that we talked about. 2017 will present its challenges. 2018 will as well and I know there was challenges in 2015. 2016 presented some odd ones, some very strange ones where people were uncomfortable in situations, but everybody pulled together and did the right thing and did their best. 2017 goals. This is not an all-inclusive list. These lists change throughout the year, but these are things that, you know, I would like to focus on in 2017 as well as the department heads and the various departments staff that work for them. Develop and implement a 10-year street improvement program. It's one of the things we talked about when we implemented the local vehicle registration fee. Howie and I and the engineers at Baxter Woodman have already started on this project. We looked at some different examples from different communities, talked about how we could tailor-make it to the City of Milton and we've already started on that process. Evaluating streamlined code enforcement procedures and policies. Talked earlier in the presentation rather glowingly about our current code enforcement, but recognize the fact that there's always room for improvement. We've gotten a lot of citizen input on code enforcement in 2016, more than I saw in 2015 and more than I saw in the short time I was here in 2014, which leads me to believe that there is still room for improvement. And the citizen involvement has been very constructive, saying, "Hey, you know, I want to understand the process better and here are some things that I see." So I took that information to heart and it's something that Scott and Howie and I all agreed, you know, we want to look at in 2017. Re-envision the role of community development authority. This kind of dovetails into the previous bullet point, but when the council made the changes to the committee structure in mid-2016, one of the things that came out of that was the community development authority may be an underutilized resource for us, for us on the city and for the folks on the council. I can see how their role could be expanded to maybe absorb some of those activities that may have been realigned through other committees, but also can really, you know, kind of expand their scope in the community overall. Right now, they really only talk about facade grant improvements and I think that's a great committee that has a lot of potential and we should, you know, look to increase that role and expand their role or at least re-envision their role in how we conduct business. Develop a citizen comment tracking system. This was a suggestion that was brought to me by the mayor and I think it's an excellent idea. It's one that I was familiar with in Janesville, but a way of kind of tracking citizen comments that get brought to us either through email, through Facebook, you know, through word of mouth. A lot of times I hear from many of you up here who say, "Hey, a citizen, I got a call from a citizen who is concerned about the sidewalk in front of their home. What can we do about it?" I'd like to create a system that kind of logs that so we make sure that we can follow up on it and not let things fall through the proverbial cracks in that situation. Continue to implement the Goodrich and Junction Square Plans. These were plans that are excellent plans that a lot of time and effort went into by the council, by the Plan Commission, by the citizens who are involved. One of the things that I heard when I first came here in 2014 was, "Hey, we have this great Goodrich Square Plan and we're not doing anything with it." So I'd like to continue to look at that plan and find areas that we can implement and improve on. And then we adopted the Junction Square Plan and likewise with that, continue to move on those. That's an area that time and time again gets brought back to me as an area of importance in the community is the downtowns, the uniqueness of our downtowns and how much of an impact that has on overall community and our economy and our sense of self. Obviously, we're looking at the south Merchant Row parking lot in 2017. Howie and I and engineers have already started working on that project that was approved by the council in 2016 and once we kind of have that finalized, we'll bring that back to the council for final approval and that will be a big change to that area that will be very visible, but we don't want to stop there and we don't want to neglect the east side of town as well, so we're going to continue to work on those plans. We want to work to identify, mitigate and limit claims in 2017. This is one of those goals that you set for yourself that oftentimes you have very little control over, but it's something that is important to me and something that really came to light in 2016. We had a number of claims. We had a number of claims that were filed in 2016. Many of those we were able to rectify outside of the process, but others we weren't. And I just want to be vigilant to that and keep an eye on it to make sure that there aren't areas that we can't improve on to help mitigate those claims in 2017. I can't remember what the final number we ended up with, but it was like eight, I think. In the previous year, it was like one. So hopefully, just a fluke year, like I said, 2016 was not unlike every other year, but in some ways it was. So that's just something that I want to keep on the radar. Work with the Milton Fire Department Transition Team to execute their goals. That group meets on a regular basis, continues to try to process improvement and come up with big and bold ideas. And I want to be able to assist them in any way they need in order to execute their goals. They've already started that process and have been working on it in 2016 and want to continue it in 2017. At our next council meeting, we'll have an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Milton, the town of Milton, and the city of Janesville on some shared services. That group is, I think, exceeding expectations at this point, and I don't want to stand in their way, so I want to help them whenever I can. And then lastly, in many ways, most importantly, and it goes without saying, but it still is important to say, continue to provide quality service to all citizens of Milton. We want to make sure that we continue to be accessible for citizens. We want to make sure that people feel comfortable talking to us. I always try to end, you know, a lot of presentations with, "If you have questions, please contact me." Inga's heard me say it a million times, Dan heard me say it a million times. I would rather have a conversation with somebody than leave it up to chance or speculation. So, you know, want to continue that kind of process and, you know, only been here for two and a half years, but hopefully the word is getting out that I want to talk to people. I like talking to people. Right, wrong, or indifferent, I guess. I don't know. Last slide is 2017 challenges. I wanted to end on a high note, but I didn't really know how to do that, but still talk about the challenges. And I also don't want there to be a perception that we've got all these great goals, well, here's some of the things that may stand in our way of not meeting those goals. We will meet those goals. We will do the things on that slide and we'll do more. But I want folks to kind of keep in the back of their mind that there will continue to be challenges. And the one that I'm sure everybody is probably sick of hearing about, Dan and myself included, and we're always the ones who are talking about it, is debt service. 27 cents of every dollar collected to taxes for the city of Milton goes to debt service. To be honest with you, there's not a whole heck of a lot we can do about that in 2017, but it is a challenge to the things that we want to accomplish in the future years. One of the things that we can do in 2017 is when we go to create the 2018 budget to keep that number in mind and remember the two questions that we need to ask every time we make a long-range decision. Can we do this and should we do this? And that number right there isn't going away and will always have a huge impact on both of those questions. We want to maintain, we're going to try to maintain service levels with declining funding. With levy limits and expenditure restraint, those things are not going away. I don't anticipate them to go away, and they're here to stay. Push will come to shove and something will give at a certain point. And that might mean service levels, that might mean staffing levels, but at a certain point, Malcolm Caldwell talked about the tipping point, and we are ever on that precipice of the tipping point, and 2017 will be no different. Balancing service delivery with priority versus incidents. This is something that I started to talk about a lot at the end of 2016 is we need to, as an organization, focus our priorities. And I know it's easy to get caught up in responding to a specific incident or a specific situation, but we always have to be mindful of what's the overall priorities, what's the overall picture, what's the overall goal that we're trying to accomplish here. It's not to mean that those incidents aren't important and can't be handled, but we need to kind of figure out where those get slotted in the process and look how that affects the overall service delivery. If we pull all of our resources away from all of our priorities to handle kind of one-offs, eventually things on this slide start to fall off. So we've just got to remain mindful of that, and that's myself included. I know it's easy to do. We want to continue to increase the tax base. That's always important. You know, tax bills went out, we got a lot of phone calls about them. Tax bills will go out in December of 18, or 17, we'll get a lot of phone calls about them. Tax bills will go out in December of 18, we'll get a lot of phone calls about them. And one of the ways to help kind of mitigate those tax increases or even see tax decreases in a future year hopefully, is to continue to increase the tax base. And that is one of the number-one priorities for our organization. It's one of our priorities in economic development as well as kind of maintaining our existing housing stock, maintaining our infrastructure, and maintaining our existing businesses. So that's going to continue to be an important aspect throughout all of our decisions we make. And lastly, to go along with that increasing the tax base is to maintain and preserve the Milton way of life. When I came in 2014, it was something that I had a great deal of respect and admiration for in the city of Milton, how folks really, you know, fit the fabric of the community with their way of life and how they feel that that's important. I continue to see that through the planning initiatives of the comprehensive plan update, saw that in the planning initiatives of the Junction Square Plan creation, folks like Milton and they like the way Milton is. We want to keep that in mind when we make our decisions. And I say that with the previous bullet point in mind, increasing tax base. Increasing tax base is absolutely important, but we want to do it in a way that's responsible and in a way that keeps the Milton way in mind. We could get development to occur that 10 years down the road, somebody's going to say, "Well, why did they allow that to happen in Milton?" If our only goal is to increase tax base, then we could get, you know, those types of development that we may not like. So we just have to keep that idea in mind, that maintain and preserve the Milton way of life when we make those types of decisions. So really, those last two bullet points are actually kind of overarching in all kind of decisions that we make. And it's not to say that they're bad or inhibiting. I think that they're things that we should be proud of and use to kind of escalate or enhance our building of tax base and our preservation of the Milton way. So that concludes my presentation. A little bit longer than I wanted it to be, but I don't really ever practice these things, so. Are there questions, thoughts, comments, concerns? Inga, anybody on council? Dan? Mark? I think it was a nice presentation.
Excellent. And probably it's, you know, something that we don't, you know, we don't keep a running tally of all the accomplishments, so it's really nice to have that global view of how far we've come in 2016 and really appreciate the staff and the leadership that we have there. It's easier to be mayor when you have such excellent staff working and being committed and loyal to their jobs and the citizens of Milton. And, you know, we say it all the time, but, you know, it's nice to have this presentation where we can be like, "Wow, that is really amazing. We are so lucky to have what we have." So thank you to everybody.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I think it was a great presentation, Al. Thank you very much. And to all of the department heads, thank you for all of your hard work and dedication. We, as council members, don't always make things easy for you, so we do appreciate everything that you do, especially when we hear all of the good things that we hear out in the community. I always hear that somebody in Public Works did this, or they called Inga and she did that, or compliments all over the place. I really feel like we were blessed in this community to have the people that we have working together for the citizens of Milton.
Okay, we'll move on to general items. Who has general items? Linda?
I just, I went over a couple of things that are coming up in the next month, and I am one who likes to make all my plans and have them in place, so I wanted to make sure that if anybody else was like me, that they had the same opportunity. One of the things that I learned when, many years ago, when I was working in the retail field is that, you know, as soon as December 30th hits the calendar, all of a sudden everything is physical fitness and diet and everything else. Well, we certainly, we have an opportunity here in Milton to assist in our food pantry. The Chamber has involved themselves and all of us in the Milton Pound Challenge. So what this entails is, there's a website that you go to, and this is out of the Princeton Club. It's the MPCprincetonclub.net. You go and you go to this website, and what you're going to do is you're going to record your exercise or weight loss weekly. As you record those, there is also a place where you can put your location of who you would like to have your food donations given to. Of course, for us, it would be the Milton Food Pantry. And there were participants last year in 2016, and I know that there is probably going to be more for 2017, but I just wanted to make sure.
What are you saying, Linda? Are you saying we got fat in 2016?
That was not my goal. That was, no, no. No, but we all could use the exercise. And if the food pantry gets food out of our little bit of our exercise, then I am all for that because somebody out there is hungry. I know that they are. So that was one of the things that I wanted to let you know. But if you go onto the Milton Chamber website, there's a lot more information on that. On February 25th, there's going to be another dining and music opportunity at the gathering place, and they're calling it Motown is Coming to Milton, which tells me that it's going to be some really good music. So that's February 25th. If you're interested in that, the tickets are $40 each, and as we all know, there's always limited seating, so you want to check that out. And then I have two requests that I would like to make. Every time that I make the attempts to listen to our council meetings on YouTube, I get extremely frustrated because I was one of the council members that was in the basement of the Shaw Building. And I don't know where this system came from or who purchased it or set it up or whatever, but would somebody please find out what's wrong with this or make the repairs and the corrections so that we don't have to put our mouths up to the microphones for people to hear us over YouTube? That's my first request. And then my second request is, a couple of years ago, we started talking about our rental properties in town, and I noticed that on the municipal magazine that we got, that there's the city of Oshkosh. Maxine's shaking her head. Yeah. You know, we kind of already started it a couple of years back when Mayor Chesmore was with us, and we've had so many problems with the rental unit that was on Parkview Drive, and then we had the other one, the other one that we are working with on Rogers Street. I'm just wondering if maybe we can't look into something there. I've always felt like anybody that lives in the city of Milton should have a nice place to live, that they should expect that if they're renting property, that it's in good shape. And I'm very well aware that we have landlords out there that do an excellent job of taking care of their properties, but I know that there's also some that don't. So I would like to know, I would like to just look into this as a goal for this year so we can keep our properties in good order. Thank you.
Any other general items? Okay. Here we go, our team-building exercise that you guys wait for anxiously. And Linda had already started this, so we'll just go back with her. Hopes and goals for 2017. I am the first to speak about general items is now going to be the first to go for team
Okay. I, as Adisa said, I've already started making some goals for 2017, things that I would like to see in the city, things that I would like to make, get myself more involved with. Our quality of life is very important to a lot of people in this community, and I really feel like us as council members, we always need to keep that in mind, whether it's nonprofit or a special event or something having to do with our departments. And so I guess for my goal this year, it's going to be more quality of life things that I can get involved with, that I can encourage other people to get involved with in the city. Things as simple as a cookie sale or Merry Milton Holiday, Civil War Living History Days, all of those things. I just feel like those are the things that make Milton, because when you don't have the money to do something grand, I just feel it's important to take even the tiny steps to just keep building on what you already have.
Chief of Police. Hopes and goals for the city of Milton 2017. I let Linda go first to give you time to think.
Hopes and goals for the city, not just my department, so.
You can focus on your department because that's part of the city.
Well.
You can do all of it.
I'm going to try. Overall, to continue to have a fantastic relationship between the police department and the community, to continue to build on that. That's one of the things I'm most proudest about in 2016, is making progress on that. I hope to continue that in 2017. And to focus on issues of community safety and make some improvements. One of the things that we've been talking about in public safety is traffic crashes and things like that, and are there some things that I can work on to help reduce that in certain places.
Inga? Who wishes she was on at council today?
Just continue to assist all the committees and commissions that I do now with all of their projects and goals for 2017.
Howie?
Maintain current services.
My hope and goal is that in January of 2018, I'm in a position to tell you my hope and goal for January 2019.
I thought you were going to say like you were going to retire.
Is that your hope for 2019?
He's long-range planning. Dan?
To keep the council and the community informed on our financial status and to try to keep it in the current position it is, if not to help improve it.
No new borrowing.
We can't? So I guess I accomplished that goal. First one to get something completed.
Oh, I'm sorry. I hope you feel better soon. Jeremy?
To see new businesses start popping up and probably watch our fire department provide the best service they can. And no new borrowing.
Maxine, you look beautiful tonight. I just want to tell you that.
I hope to get my house settled and to retire and be around with Mark one day.
What's your name again? Al? Did you know the question ahead of time?
No, I didn't. I didn't. But, you know, those are a lot, a lot of my goals. But I, but I will say from a personal perspective, and I actually already thought about this, you know, come the new years, my, my goals in 2017 are to smile more, to worry less, and to play more music.
Are you starting a band?
No. No.
So it's difficult to just narrow it down to a couple, because when you are governing an entire city with the council and with staff, there's a lot of things that have, have to take place simultaneously. So, but one of the, there's a few that I really do want to focus on, and they're similar to what we had in our goals listed. But probably, as you all know, because we are doing team building and we've done lots of different trainings to try to move forward and be a progressive community, I want to continue with that in 2017 and expand it, more forward-thinking, and to continue to expand our economic development and create more opportunities. But at the same time, like Al had noted, we have to maintain and support those initiatives that continue to keep in mind our small-town values. Because what we hear over and over again is, yes, we, you know, we want and we need economic development, but don't forget the gathering place, and don't forget the Milton House, and don't forget those things that make Milton, Milton, and a unique place to live. So that is definitely always on my mind, is how do we do those things simultaneously? Because we have to. We have to do them simultaneously. The other thing is to continue to effectively collaborate and to build trust with all of our nonprofits, the school district, public and civic groups, and, and the business sector. So we can't govern the community successfully without having successful partnerships, because it's just not the city of Milton that makes Milton the community that it is. It's all of our partners working together. That includes Black Hawk Technical College and new developments and initiatives that we have in our industrial park, and all of those community events like Wally Fest and the Fourth of July, all those things that people talk about. And they talk about what they did. Did you go to Wally Fest? Did you hear the bands? You know, all of those things that bind us together and make us a stronger community. So those are my goals and my hopes for 2017, regardless of whether I continue to be mayor or not. I am still going to be here to support all of those things that are important to the citizens of Milton. Elena?
My goal will be to have two more flawless elections, and I would also like, as a goal for the city, to see as large a turnout for the upcoming elections as we saw for the presidential. It was an incredible turnout. There is a lot of reasons why people were very pumped up for that election, but the ones coming up are very important, and so I'd like to see as, as larger turnout for those too.
Brian?
I'd like to see the city continue in progressing in what I think is the right direction, and also see continued support for all of our departments, as well as also nonprofits, and just increased interaction with the community in general. And then also a balanced budget to have an EAGN next year.
Nancy?
And last but not least, everybody has stated well all of the positive things that we want. But one of the things that I would like to see is, we used to have coffee and get-togethers, so if people were having a landlord issue, they could come and grieve to a council person and find out if this fell under the topic of what could be addressed. One of the things about having coffee with people is that you can identify what is bugging them, and you make yourself available at an hour that maybe they can hit. Not everybody can hit seven o'clock at night, but I do miss that because one of the things about collaboration is you have to talk with people, and I miss those coffee events, you know, which I hope would aid in that. And I agree with everybody's positive statements that has already passed in front of me. Thank you. Happy New Year.
Okay, committee reports. Are there any new committee reports since we last had our council meeting?
I don't think we've had meetings.
Linda?
There was a library meeting, and I just would like to let everybody know, everything is still in place for February. We're going to have an awesome open house scheduled in the library. It is coming along very well. Furniture is actually arriving this month, so that is a good thing. But I also wanted to point out to you that our library director, Lisa Brooks, just continued, she just received her renewal certificate for her public librarian certificate. And I know she's not here tonight, but I just, I want to congratulate her and thank her. She's, she puts in a lot of work, and, and we appreciate everything that she does.
Okay, I just want to remind everybody before we go to staff reports, because I might forget, our next meeting is Tuesday, January 17th at 7:00 PM here. So staff reports, I'm just going to start with Howie and just chime in.
Nothing out of the ordinary, just winter work is just going on, that's all.
Okay. Dan?
Nothing too exciting. I was looking at the year-end tax collection numbers, and we, there was $3.5 million that was collected, which was 35% of total pot. Just thought it was kind of interesting, so I thought I'd share that. Useless but important stat.
Al?
Elena?
I just wanted to report that we have four official candidates for the Office of Common Council. We've got Nancy Lauder, Larry Lane, Jeremy Sajak, and Theresa Roche. Also, we have an extended deadline, since we have a current council member who chose not to file papers by the deadline today, and it gets extended by 72 hours. So that office is still, or the candidates for that office can still change. For the office, can you tell people if they, so what does that mean if it's extended? So if you wanted to run for council and be on the ballot, you had to have your papers in by 5:00 PM today, but now it's been extended for 72 hours, so you have to have your papers in by Friday at 5:00 PM.
Okay.
Okay. And then we've got two official candidates for the Office of Mayor, which is Anisa Welch and Jeremy Sajak.
And chief, anything?
It was a very safe holiday, so very pleased and nothing to report.
Inga, anything?
We are approaching the deadline for the police officer eligibility list recruitment that is this Friday.
At what time?
11:59 PM.
Okay. Perfect. Okay, item number 10. Maxine?
Consideration of a motion to convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Section 19.85, Pron 1, Pron F, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation which is, it is or is likely to become involved. Reference complaint against and by Aldous Perserson Lauder.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
All in favor.
All those opposed? The vote is unanimous, and we'll go into closed session. We are now back in open session.
I understand that the common council may be considering the following motion to resolve the pending ethics complaint by the common council against Aldous Person Nancy Lauder and the pending open records complaint by Aldous Person Nancy Lauder against the mayor of the city and the common council. Number one, to state on the record that the city has produced all records that have been requested of the city pertaining to the preparation of the agenda for the May 2015 meeting in question. Two, that the city would agree to dismiss the pending ethics charge against Aldous Person Lauder with prejudice. Three, that Aldous Person Lauder would dismiss the open, pending open meetings lawsuit against Mayor Welch, the city of Milton and Milton Common Council with prejudice. Three, that the city would agree to pay not more than $368.34 in costs incurred in the, by Aldous Person Lauder in connection with the pending open meetings lawsuit. Next, that the parties would agree to jointly invite the Wisconsin Freedom of Information Council to present a seminar in Milton addressing open meetings law, closed session law, and open records law at no cost to the city. Next, that Aldous Person Lauder in connection with the dismissal of the complaint and open records complaint, agree to sign the full and final release of claims against the city in reference to the open meetings lawsuit and ethics complaint. And also that the documentation carrying out the terms of the, carrying out the above terms would be signed by January 10th, 4:00 PM by the parties.
So if somebody wants to move that, you know I can't.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Does anybody have any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Nancy, are you abstaining?
I'm abstaining.
The motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No move.
There's a motion, motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We are now adjourned.